From the June eleventh meeting. I've read it. Officer Building Zoning and Planning, Rick Oliver, dated. Next, we see June ninth, okay? He has one comment. Department of Environmental Management, and then. Nine comments. From the Department of Fire Prevention Town Orange Company, Kurt, they have one comment. Uh, again. Another one, June ten. Additional supporting information is required in order to demonstrate that potential. Excellent, with increase. Site plan critical environment area. Oh, no, he's correct. I have another letter, June sixth. In order to demonstrate. With increase. Site plan critical environment area not be approved for drainage. No, no? Second, from Weston Sampson. In order to demonstrate that potential. Excellent, with increase. Additional site plan critical area not be approved for drainage. I have a letter. Supporting information is required in order to demonstrate. Excellent, just one more. Site plan critical area not be approved. Rockland County Planning, dated. Have an email from Brad Felix. Audrey, thanks for the time for the email dated eleven. That's what's, uh, over, okay.
Area, um, please.
Oh, yes, sorry, you have, like, was I, was on the other. Last page on the package she gave us back.
I think the narrative's right in front of that.
All right. Yep, that's it, from your phone. I have a letter from Jeffrey Steele Home, Small Architects, dated. Project system is a single family. Has single family dwelling. Also includes a new mudroom within the confinement. Project will include drainage gallery to handle stormwater. That increase in. I think that was, yeah, yeah, no, I put that in here.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, dated, uh, December, I think? Yeah, December, yeah. Comments?
No, it looks like you did everything that you needed to do.
Any questions or comments?
No questions or comments, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions or comments? Uh, ask the member of the board, open up the public.
Motion open public portion.
Do I have a second?
Okay, all favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this project? One more time, anybody from the public wish to speak on this project?
Motion to close public portion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All favor? Aye, okay.
Make a motion final with conditions.
No, motion to reaffirm.
Okay, motion to reaffirm, uh, uh, sequo.
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? You want to do final?
Yeah, motion to final with conditions.
Okay, with conditions, and let me read those conditions. Okay, Officer Building Zoning and Planning, Rick Oliver, August seventh, three. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town Orange Town. Uh, August eighteenth, three. Deputy Togota, town, Deputy Town Attorney, August eighteenth, two. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, July thirty first, one. Roman Professional Engineering, August first, one. Uh, Alfred Gaddy, August third, one. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all favor? Any opposed? None. Okay, good luck, sir, with your project.
Uh, next is the Rockland Galet Athletic Association. That's PB twenty-five dash six.
I'm Jonathan Hodash, I'm the architect for the project.
Joe McGirl, Rockland GA Development Chairman.
Okay, please describe the comments for us.
Basically, what we, I'm sorry, we have a concession stand that was built without benefit of building permits, and we're looking to legalize it. Uh, we've been to PRC three times now, we've addressed all of the concerns. Some of the concerns in these review letters came out prior to the last, um, between the PRC meeting and this meeting, so we didn't have a chance to get responses back. We've already addressed almost every item on here. The only thing we didn't have was we did not get the Booker Engineering letter until today. So, but some of the stuff on here has already been done as well, the drainage study, the plans, et cetera. So I believe we satisfied pretty much everything that's been asked for.
Let me go through the consultancy report. Okay, project review has no additional comments. Um, Officer Building Zoning and Planning, Rick Oliver, August seventh, he has two comments. Department of Environmental Management, Town of Orange Town, August eighteenth, they have one comment. Okay, uh, Booker Engineering, August fifth. No supporting information was provided to demonstrate mitigation for potential adverse impacts as a result of the increased stormwater runoff. We therefore recommend that the Rockland GAA seasonal concession stand site plan not be approved for drainage at this time. Bureau of Fire Prevention, July thirty first, one comment. Okay, I just read that Booker letter. Okay, I have Roman Professional Engineering, P L L C, August first. They have one comment. Uh, my only comment on the proposed legalization is that the property line as illustrated on the aerial map is not accurate regarding the concession stand location. I have a letter from Rockland County Department of Planning, uh, August seventh. And they remain as local decision. I have a letter dated July twenty-first from Rockland County Planning Department stating, uh, comments attached. I have another letter from Rockland County Planning, July twenty-first. Consent the Town of Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from the Department of Planning, Rockland County, April eleventh. Again, remaining local decision. Uh, I have a letter from, that's redundant, redundant, no, it's not, I'm sorry. I have a letter from Rockland County Planning Department, March eighteenth. Consent the Town of Orange Town Planning Service Lead Agent. I have another letter from Rockland County Planning, March eighteenth, comments attached. I have a letter from Rockland County, um, Environmental Health, April twenty-second. Uh, one comment. And I have a letter from Alfred Gaddy, based on the plans provided, proposed work may be in conflict with gas, existing gas services, please contact owner's new business department. For disconnects reconnect, please note all gas facilities must be located prior to work and all seven fifty-three is also to be filed. I have another letter from Alfred Gaddy dated April twelfth, basically saying the same thing. Anything else, Mike?
I'm sure, okay. The short EAF?
Okay, short EAF for February, uh, twelfth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, I have a letter from GAA received two twenty-one twenty-five.
Okay, a letter from G, uh, RCGAA received two twenty-one twenty-five. Audrey, anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Lisa, questions or comments?
No, just one question. So the drainage report has been, the drainage report's been done, but there's a.
It was, it was done and it was updated on August eleventh after the PRC to include some additional area that they wanted to, uh, address.
Booker, Booker hasn't gone in or what?
It was sent out, I just haven't received the replies later from comments.
Do I have any questions?
Mike, anything?
No, no comments at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my one concern is the drainage review from Booker Engineering on August fifth. Um, I, I know there's a time overlaps and everything else which kind of messes you guys up. So at this point, we cannot approve because they did not approve drainage, uh, which is, you know. Um, let me get the rest of the board's opinion, but we'll come back to what, what my concern is. Bruce, questions or comments?
No, I already, unfortunately, you'll have to come back this time.
Yeah, okay. Matt, another thing?
No.
Okay. Um, what I suggest, and I'm sorry you have to do this, is you ask for continuation and once you get the drainage, come back to the next meeting if you have, have the work, okay? And, and, you know, again, the timing on this, it's not your fault, not our fault. We're, we're kind of caught in the middle. So we really can't do anything until we get that.
I understand.
All right, so I'm asking you to ask for continuation.
Oh, yes, may we, uh, ask for continuation to the next, well, so we get.
And, uh, again, I don't know what the scheduling is, I don't know if there's room on the next meeting, hopefully there is. Excuse me?
I think we can make room.
Yeah, well, it depends, okay, so if we can, and if you get the report back, and if we can make room, we would be more than happy to entertain it.
Yeah, I guess it's more of a question how quickly Booker turns it around.
Yes.
We have no control over that.
No, I understand, all right? All right?
Thank you very much.
Do you need to shoot without a date?
Excuse me? If he can get on the next meeting, if he has the report, he can come right back.
If they get the report back from Booker and it's approved.
Participation to September tenth meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Booker has the report, right?
Yes.
Yes, oh, definitely, yeah, because.
They should have a back post, yes.
They haven't got that.
I'm saying, but they should.
They should.
Yeah.
If you give them a call tomorrow, what's it?
All right, so the ten.
All right?
Thank you very much.
And we'll push you, we'll put you first thing on the agenda if we can. No, best way, it's a one, two, three, you know, that's, because that's all we need.
Thank you very much.
Okay? Thank you, guys, all right? Okay, next is, uh, Wyman Fisher Funeral Home Site Plan, PB twenty-five dash forty-five. Good evening. Who are you? I don't know who you are. My old hunting buddy. Days of the day, my friend. All right, both of you sign in, please, and then state your name for the record.
Bart Rowey.
David Fisher.
Yes, sir, could you explain your project for us?
Yes, uh.
Do you want this?
Uh, this is the Wyman Fisher Funeral Home.
There's a little silver button on the side, did you get it? There you go, okay.
This is the funeral home. Behind the funeral home is a house, been there for over seventy years. David is the owner of Wyman Fisher Funeral Home, he's actually born in the house. We're putting an addition on the west side, right here. And we're raising the roof here and here, above the addition is a deck. We were in front of the planning board on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, and got referral to go to the zoning board for the required variance we need, which was, since this is a non-conforming use, any addition needs to have zoning board approval. We were at, we were a little over fifty percent of the increase of square footage, which is against the zoning code, which would kick in a use variance. And the county, uh, issued a letter on that saying it should be disapproved for that reason. We went to the zoning board, uh, the first time, and they were, they were on the fence about approving it, and we said, well, would it be easier if we came back to the next meeting and took a percent off and got it below fifty percent, which we did? They approved the project. Then we went to the Architect Review Board, showed them all our siding and the roof and the windows and everything we're doing, and they approved everything. Now we're back for final for playing.
Okay, excellent. Let's go through the consultancy reports and. Okay, project review has no comments. Officer Building Zoning and Planning, Rick Oliver, August seventh, he has two comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, August fourth, they have one comment. Weston Sampson, August thirteenth. Um, it is our opinion that increased stormwater runoff can be successfully mitigated for this project. We therefore recommended that Wyman Fisher's site plan be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments, of which there are three. I have a letter from Collier Engineering dated August fifth. Uh, which is basically, um, it's, it's appro, okay. The above comments represent our professional opinion and judgment, but may not necessarily in case reflect opinion of the planning board. Based on the information provided, we believe that there is no significant adverse impact to stormwater runoff that require mitigation. Therefore, we recommend that the Wyman Fisher Funeral Home Site Plan be approved for drainage subject to above comments, of which there are four. Roman Professional Engineering, August first, has no comments. Rockland County Department of Planning, August seventh. They have remained local decision. I have a letter from Rockland County Department of Planning, July eighteenth, comments attached. A letter from Rockland County Planning, July eighteenth, consented Town of Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from, I thought I did that, uh, Bureau of Fire Prevention, August fourth, uh, one comment. Oh, wait a minute, um, here, I have a letter from Department of Environmental Management, August eighteenth, I think he has eight comments. Yeah, okay. Audrey, anything else?
Uh, and you want to read in the short form and the narrative?
Oh, okay, I thank you very much. I have, I think the short form and the old one. The short form was, uh, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. And the narrative, I don't, is it, is it on the last page?
This page of the.
Oh, okay, that's the old decision. Okay, I don't have that narrative.
Is that the one dated May thirty-first?
Yes, okay.
That's more.
That's Barty Rowan, uh, May thirty-first.
Right, that's.
Just a narrative for the project.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Lisa, question or comments?
No, no questions.
Okay, Mike, question or comments?
Yeah, just one question. Um, we added the updated, uh, notes onto the plan.
We, we will do that. That came up at the, uh, at the PRC.
Okay, let's see if they show required notes. The thing is, where is the handicap spot? It's not shown on the, uh, on the diagram.
We're not, we're not, we're not changing parking, so there's no requirement.
You have to have a handicap spot. Have one now.
Yeah.
But it's up the hill.
Yeah.
Which can't be, uh, I thought that was brought up at the prior, yeah, we brought that up at the prior planning board meeting.
I have recollection of that.
Yeah, handicap accessible. It was brought up the last meeting on September twenty-fifth, twenty-four.
Evening, David, I don't have any recollection of that.
Yeah.
Uh, there's, there's no substantial change to the parking.
Well, it's a commercial, too.
All right, it's a funeral home, but, but there's no change to the funeral home or the parking to the funeral home.
Well, you have, yeah, you have a handicap spot when you go up the hill.
Yeah.
Right? Before you get to the ramp.
Yeah.
However, you're putting grass in there. Putting to the new diagram.
Right, right, right here.
How are you, and the high grass?
This is not grass right here, so this is, this is the accessible route.
Because the way you're pushing, putting it there, it doesn't seem to leave any. You have your, your, uh, woodstock hay fence. You have the concrete carving, you have the concrete that comes out. Where is the, where, what's going to be grass, what's going to be the, uh, thing up to the, uh, handicap spot?
Right, so this, the, the, the hatched area is pavement to grass. This is still pavement. So this is the, I'm, I'm going the accessible route with the, with the pointer right here.
Okay. So. Still going to have twelve spots out there in front?
This, none of this is changing.
All right. No, because when I counted up the spots there, there was nine, ten, and eleven, but there was no twelve. Twenty-three spots past the walkway.
Eleven and twelve, that one, one's handicap, one's the access for the handicap, so handicap is two spots. One spot for two spots, because one has to be getting out of the, uh, vehicle.
Okay, so, that's where, that's where I was confused, walking around the property, looking where the handicap.
Right.
The sign is, which is, you got one handicap going up the hill.
Right.
Then you got the other handicap before the ramp.
Right.
Going in. Right, going up that hill.
Right.
But in the front there, after you have the walkway going into the, uh, into the funeral home, you got the pop, spots nine, ten, eleven, but there's no marked out spot twelve.
Correct.
But the, but the plan is show with the twelve.
Right, it's the tw, as I said, twelve's the handicap. I mean, we could change that to a hatch and say it's handicap also, that's, that's the access to get off, because you need the space on the side of the handicap to get out.
So eleven was going to be the handicap?
I believe it is that. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure about that, but I, I, I'm, I'm confused why that's coming up at the planning board meeting, because there's no change to that, and it's a pre-existing condition.
No, we brought it up the last meeting. I have it in my notes.
I have it in your notes. If we look at the transcript, I'm sure it's not in there.
You'll find it in the transcript. When it's on the film, you brought it up. All right. Since we do get handicap people coming to the, to the home.
I mean, this actually predates the requirement for handicap spots. The handicap spots would put somebody on it, there's no requirement of any handicap spots.
No, it's just the way the handicap spot is, I wouldn't want to be handicapped.
No, I understand, I understand.
Trying to get up that little.
It's hard to have in a hundred-year-old group.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just bring it up, so you answered the question.
We got the ramp.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go further.
Okay, Bruce, anything?
Uh, no, I don't have any issues with the, with the project. I'm, I'm just baffled that it took this long to get a simple project like this through. I mean, it doesn't impact anybody, it doesn't impact zero people.
I'm, I'm curious to, to why we have comments from three drainage consultants. Three.
No.
We have Booker. We have Booker.
I had two from.
We have Colliers, and we have Weston and.
Weston is Booker.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That answers, so we have two. Again, so why are we getting from two?
It is what it is.
Well, this is, my client's going to have to pay.
But they, but they're both approved, so it's not a problem.
I understand. But my client's going to have to pay two consult, consultation fees to two consulting engineers? Because it's not free, Orange Town doesn't pay for this. Client pays for this.
I understand.
I think that's better than that.
You, you, you're going to have to discuss that with the building department. Now, we don't have any control over that.
I just wanted it on the record.
Okay.
That makes it kind of weird.
Might have been due to the change over in the department, but, uh.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I mean, we could go over the comments, how their comments are ridiculous. And how they, they talk about the impervious, and clearly there's a chart giving you amount of impervious, and they're, they're discussing it should be there, I have no standard. One comment is no legend. If you pull up, there's a legend right in this corner, below you. I mean, comments that slow down a project.
The last project had three comments from Booker on three different dates within a week.
I, I, I saw that. I heard that.
Yeah.
I was listening. I know, I know, we can have a dissertation on Booker's, uh, comments over the years.
No, it's.
Okay, I said my piece, thank you.
Thank you. Matt, questions or comments?
I have none.
Okay, motion to open up for the public?
Motion open public portion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all favor? Aye. Anybody from the public wish to speak on his project? Okay, one more time, anybody from this public wish to speak on his project?
Motion to close public portion.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All favor? Aye. Any opposed? None?
Motion to reaffirm sequo.
Motion to reaffirm sequo?
Motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, all favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? What do you want to do?
Motion for final?
Okay, motion for final with conditions?
Motion for final with conditions.
And let me go through the conditions. Okay, Officer Building Zoning and Planning, Rick Oliver, August seventh, it's two. Department of Environmental Management and, uh, Engineering, Town of Orange Town, August eighteenth, has eight. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, August fourth, has one. Weston Sampson, August thirteenth, has three. Collier Engineering is just a narrative. Uh, Roman Professional Engineering, August first, has one, first, has one. Rockland County Department of Planning, August seventh, has one. And that's it. Do I have a second? Okay.
Uh, the plan has got to be updated to show the required notes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Uh, good luck.
Very much, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, you too, thank you. Okay, next is Tri-B LTD PB twenty-five dash forty-six. Who the heck is that? Is that me?
Sorry.
Yes, sir. Uh, please state your name and address, but your name's the record, please. Yes, sir, what can we do you?
Okay, um, I want to give a little history on this. This was part of, um, Tom Quellen.
I'm hoping with the bumping lot, we want the Q two. This is a legal lot, it has the accessibility to lot number thirty-eight, accessibility to a lot number thirty-nine. So, hopefully my client's correct, he wants to build a home there. And we'll see, it's laid out, if you sort of. I had access to final request. I had access to thirty-five. I built through thirty-eight. I thought it was up to the. Thirty-seven. We love that I said. Fine, because I'm trying to remember, because I wrote this all about the A's. If it wasn't fine. If you have no comments. Officer Building and Zoning and Planning, Rick Oliver, August seventh, here's. Park of Environmental Management and Engineering, Blue Theater, is August eighteen. Park of Fudge Town, Orange Town, August fifth, they showed. Letter from Weston Sampson, August. Our opinion that a crease. Tri-B LTD. Comments? From Collier Engineering. That provides sufficient information. I mean. Letter from Rocket County Planning Department, July. Letter, no? Anything else? Oh, I have a project narrative dated. I know, I saw that, I, I haven't seen the data. Obviously, June, and then. I believe I did.
Fire, August fifth, just to verify.
August eighteenth. I've heard from.
And I prefer Bureau, August, August fifth.
August fifth, yes. Yeah.
That's it then, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you very much. Stay in there. Have that? Lisa, any question or comments?
Uh, we do have in the public, we don't have any other questions.
At the easement. Question is, what's the distance from the foundation? The cabinet. Well, we're gonna have to go back to the house, we'll give you the wall. Okay, how far is this to the, uh? Hard to tell, from here, if it's a four to five feet or. Maybe a new wall on this. Oh, one to twenty. Look here, come quick. The wall on line one, looks like it was about four feet, aren't they? Or that's all. Got at least three, four feet. Yeah, so I mean, you're gonna have to do something or go through. Folks, it's not a question of what goes there, it's a question of distance. You look, you look like four feet now. Yeah, gas only goes down the. Ash line right next to house. Yeah. You can put sewer there or something else, you know? No, I don't want to put sewer. I really like to see you move it away, at least a minimum of six feet, then. You already thought about going into the driveway? I'm sorry, go. You thought about putting any of the utilities on? Have you any, will you go? Driveway, there's definitely been. Oh, yeah, I see a, yeah. You can meet for, meet. Yeah, right. So you propose actual wood and steel. Uh, does propose action, meets or exceeds? Meet or exceed. Yes, yes, okay. Just, that's okay, that's right. The fire has a try here, just. Fire has a try here. Okay, so. On the, uh. Um, I thought you did. Said for blood, yeah. Well, we didn't get. I, I thought you did. That somebody can submit the. Distance on the street. By the way, the first law, I, I didn't know. Would you just send it to me? Okay, I will. Further questions, can I get, back to you. Bruce, any question about? Yeah. Hey, your giant flag will have to be on. But the easement was only to the garage, to the back property. On lot number. Given the thirty-eight. Never on, on the back property, it was only on. Back property only was lined up, the easement only went to the garage. Garage was always part of that, yeah, okay, but it wasn't part of the back to us. There's some divided, there's some divided disproperty, that little. You won't put it, that's what we have to do. I mean, for the food. Like, we're calling for the food. But I remember the question, the easement. When they did it originally. It was not, not given that, this was gonna be able to be built on. Cause, I mean, this point would. Well, they gave the property to the women outside. That was, that was to be determined later on, when you're, when you think that. The work began. The fire drawing. How you gonna build, that's all Bruce says, but it's how you. One of the separates, the most headed separates. Yes. It's the same product. Well, we, I would think that everybody would have to sign up on easement for it to extend that. We'll just file easement? Or just a note on the map that refers to the easement? Right? I don't know, maybe you can just. There could be an easement in the deed. It'd be more than just a note in terms of, there has to be an easement. Oh, no. Okay.
Motion open public portion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all favor, aye. Anybody from the public wish to speak, please step forward, I'll give you the microphone over there, state your name and address for the record, please.
Craig Stewart, twelve Center Street, Pearl River. Can I give you guys these photos, they're of the, the shared driveway? Okay. I guess first, I should address what Mr. Brenner said, because a lot of it was a lie. Everything was proposed. It was. Because what, he says that everything was, was in the deed, that it was a right of way. That's untrue. He also should know what piggybacking is, because you can't do that, it's illegal to piggyback right of ways in the state of New York. There is no access to that back property, right now. There is my land, which has trees, plants, rhododendrum, and then, nothing. And it's a hundred and seventy feet from the street, there are much better ways to get to that, to get to that lot, if you guys are to push something through, but they should not go through. Anyways, my wife wrote some stuff out. "I'm here to express my deep concern regarding the proposed access development that would divide my property at twelve Center Street to provide passage to a neighboring back property. For the past five years, we've endured repeated and unsettling intrusions at all hours, strangers have walked past our property, into our property, into my garage. Unknown individuals have parked in our driveway directly in front of our garage, blocking our access when we've returned home from errands or children's activities. These experiences have made it difficult to feel truly safer at home. With this insane proposal to divide our property to create an access road between our house and our detached garage, we're facing an even greater disruption. This area is a vital part of our daily life and character of our home. We maintain hundred-year-old trees that provide shade and beauty, stone path connecting our back deck to the garage, well-established, established rhododendrum and landscape being cultivated over decades. We also have crucial utilities, including underground electrical lines to the garage and our water line that comes from Central Ave. The original access agreement was granted in order to access the garage, which was formerly Eighth Center Street. When the seller had the lot line moved without creating access to the rear property, they undid the right of way to Eighth Center. Piggybacking right of ways is legal in New York State." Piggybacking right of ways is legal in New York State, since there's no access, there's no right of way. Now you have a property with no access. Dividing our land poses serious implications for us as homeowners, we would physically split our property, cutting between our house and garage. The flow between these two structures is fundamental to our daily living, property maintenance, community gatherings, and my small business. We regularly host neighborhood events that extend from our garage to our backyard, and this land, uh, this proposal would not only make those impossible, would also introduce safety concerns for children, guests, pets. Would definitely devalue your property."
Three minutes, okay? I am, we understand, okay?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yep, yeah, this isn't gonna take long. My name is Jane Anderson, I'm the daughter, one of the daughters of Don Donoyles, he passed away May twentieth. Otherwise, he would be here to corroborate what Craig said, and, um, my, my questions are for drainage regarding that easement. I don't think that was addressed in, in the documentation, uh, of August seventh, from the Office of Building, Zoning, Planning, Administration, and Enforcement. There was a comment that while a complete drainage review was performed for the proposed lot, no drainage review has been proposed, has been performed for the existing front lot where a driveway is to be paved, and that's that whole gravel driveway that separates my dad's property from Mr. Stewart's property. And I'm wondering if that drainage had, if, you know, a drainage review has been done on that. And now, that was stated August seventh, but previously on August fifth, there was, uh, something from Collier, Collier's Engineering and Design, um, also asking if there's any mitigation proposed for the gravel driveway that's being converted to pavement. So those two issues, I didn't hear addressed when you were going over the paperwork, so I just wanted to say that for the record. And also, for years, my dad, uh, was very concerned about that right of way, and, uh, this, this proposal has nothing, that, that easement has nothing to do with that property in the back. And common sense should prevail, that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jane McBrenner. One oh five Waterstone Road, Greenwood Lake, one oh nine two five. Thank you.
Plus, just that book, did you name an address for the record, please?
Oh, James Marinelli, twenty Center Street. Um, I, Tom Quinlan, the original owner of both, he owned my house and Craig's house. And he would never sell me the house, I rented that house, I moved into that house in two thousand and five. And he told me there was no access to that land back there, that's why he would never sell me my house. When him, him and his wife passed away, the daughter sold me that house in two thousand and eighteen. There's no access to that land back there, there was no access ever to that land. That's why he would never sell me that house, and I don't think the daughter ever knew that. So, there is no right of way to that land. Okay? And there's, absolutely, and I get water in my basement every spring, there's definitely drainage issues. So, as far as I know, there was never any access to that land, he would never sell me that house for that reason. But she sold me the house, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. House, yes sir, so you can name an address for the record, please?
Hi, good evening, Michael Tricano, I live at one ninety West Washington Avenue, my property backs right against where they wanna build. Yes, Tricano, T R I C A N O. Thank you. I'm gonna break you. Okay, so, I'm a little nervous, because, uh, we're in a fight for the quality of our life, for myself and my neighbors. Uh, I lived here, at one ninety West Washington, my whole life, my family bought this house in nineteen sixty. Um, but I'd like to know, the house being built, uh, are they planning on living in it, or do they plan on just to build and sell? Uh, if that's the case, and, you know, that's kinda greedy, and it's really no concern to the neighbors that live around this area. Our basements flood, all the time, there, I was always told that there is an underground stream, and I get water that comes up underground. Property is landlocked, it is, you know, and then, that easement really doesn't go back. The house that's being proposed, uh, doesn't go with the neighborhood houses, it's a two-story, three-garage house, our houses around there are very small. Also, a question is, uh, to the board is, uh, what's the setback, and how close can a house be to a property line? And especially being a house that large. You know, we're, we can't afford attorneys, um, and we just want good quality of life, there's lots of wildlife back there, foxes, owls, woodpeckers. We even had a bear run through there the other, about two years ago. Um, cutting down trees, we're worried about, we live on West Washington, and the woods are in behind us, it's a heavily traffic, we get a lot of buses, cars. We're worried about the air pollution, trees help absorb all the, all the pollution. Main thing is, I, I'd like to see the, the board maybe come out and, and just take a look and see what, what we're looking at. And, uh, thank you.
Motion for a couple, motion. Yes, sir. Motion for a couple, motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, but, okay. We have a lot of work to do here, um. And, now, attorney. Um, if you ask. They admit, can we? It was a lot of, they're calling. About it. Posted, and you did know about it, and that's not a lie, that's a fact, when this individual posted property, three tons was supposed to be taken away. Supposed to be taken away. Um, ladies and gentlemen, what's happened is the act possess whatever continuation, because there's a lot of information that don't have, you don't have, and, uh, asked presented to us, and there will be another meeting, uh, as to when, I don't know, but everybody will be notified, and applicant is saying about these posters, um, that's not right, um, but it's entitled to their speech, entitled to their opinion. I'd like to say about that, but, but these posters, if they're put up, should not be taken down. Accusing anybody, I'm just saying. Oh, sir, pu- public section's closed, I'm sorry, the applicant will be, will come back, and at that point, you can, uh.
I, when, when can I talk to? Can I talk to you guys?
You'd have to, you'd have to come in.
So, only during these meetings, I get three minutes.
You can, anytime you want, you can come and talk to them, or the town attorney, get a meeting point, and go talk to them, anytime you want. Or zoning accessible at these meetings.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, sir, I'm, we're not putting you off, we're just trying to keep everything legit.
No, I hear anything else.
Everybody, to form, to everybody, yes.
Right.
Right? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is state drainage, maybe twenty-five, they'll all work.
Board will take a, a recess for five minutes. Time is now eight forty-one hours.
The house on Central.
Okay, yes.
He tried to do a land swap. Said, it looks like a brown house.
Yes, yes.
Then there's that wood, and Craig goes on, he tried to do a land swap, and he said that kind of wanted to help the property. That's what, folks, please take your discussion outside, we have another, our last patient. We don't wanna be abrupt, but. For my, for dead.
Yeah.
Maybe you can, you can, you can do so.
Yeah.
Hey, uh, everybody signed in? Excuse me, gentlemen, hey, guys, please, we're trying to get, another meeting going.
Time is eight forty-three, all members of the board are still present, continually, they're meeting.
All right, did you sign in?
As I did.
Okay. Thank you for the record session, I'm here, sir. Yes, sir, what can we do for you? Well, we got another. You want to go on way to back? Sixty-seven. Ooh. Oh, no, no, that's a story. What happened is you're going to data centers. They're going to, they're going to.
Containers are gonna be inside the building?
No, 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 inside, no, inside. Bring this up in the door. It's a very, very odd piece of property, and I'm trying to make the best. There's often computer cabinets, so we. Often data centers exist, and. Nothing happens, no, I don't, I don't deal with any hazards in here. I give you no, no additional comments. Office of Building is only planned, Eric Oliver, uh, August seven, his seven comments. Higher prevention, August. Environmental management, engineer. Higher engineering. First, no comment. Er, receive on June eleventh twenty-five.
As, uh, he wants him writing, the use of the storage. This is where guys are equipped, right? And the use of the pull bar, and his, what?
Other than, I'll be honest, my type of over.
Um, and then we, we only have a drainage report from Collier, we don't have one from Brooklyn.
Well, how, how is it, is it? Mike, questions or comments?
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, so we're looking for an amendment to the site plan, it's not a new plan, correct? This is an amendment. I think that's the way they spoke at the project review, that would be, take care, am I correct on that, uh?
I think, um, Mr. Peter was, did.
Matter either way.
Six or one.
Okay.
Right.
Whatever. Okay, now, you, right now, you have, uh, six forty-foot trailers, one twenty-foot trailer?
That's what we're proposing, and they're not there now.
There's some trailers.
Couple of small ones there.
Right, and you got.
There's no forties.
And there are vans there.
Yeah.
Okay. Now. What's your story in the trailers, is all for data?
It's primarily for data centers, or construction materials for data centers, computer room raised floors. Computer room raised floors. Over, check it out.
Now, these, these containers, how long are they going to be, are they going to be permanent there?
No, not that permanent, the thing is, it's very difficult to say when it comes, how long it will be there before we actually need it to go off to a site, right? So, that's why I wanted to originally just put flexible space to put trailers. I was then asked to put specific locations on a site plan and where they would exactly go, so, kind of, I can't predict exactly how long they'll cover up.
Okay, so the trailers are pulled in there, they're left there until they're needed, and then it's...
And then they move.
Okay, so it's not that you're using them, taking stuff in and out the whole time?
No, that's why I'm trying to call it temporary storages, because I think we're confusing people.
I think that a, a improved narrative would probably be, uh...
I'll be, I'll be honest with you, this is ten years. This has been the most difficult piece of property in my entire life.
Well, no, I, I've been here since the beginning.
If you tell me no, I'll just say, I'm just not going to do it.
No.
I'll say, in the front of the building there?
Yeah.
Uh, the house? They made me put a handicap ramp, the board made me put a handicap ramp. For a house that's a hundred and twenty years old.
And it's used for storage. And that's used for storage.
Yeah. So, it's just like, I'm just, I honestly, it's nothing against you guys, it's just, you know, it's just, you tell me this doesn't work.
No, just reading some of the comments from Rockland County Planning and D E M E, I think a clarified narrative stating that trailers are pulled in, they're dropped off at these locations. They're used for storage of whatever the data thing, construction or for the building of, of the data center, when needed at a site, they're then towed out and taken to that site.
Again, but my point is though, I'm not spending any more time or money on this. It's ten years. So, if, if the board does tonight, says it doesn't work, it's okay, it's no hard feelings, I'll just move, I'll just move that there to something else. I can't, I don't want to be emotional anymore, too, any longer.
No, I'm just telling you, that would...
I agree, I, I agree, that would be good.
Because you, because Rockland County Planning can say they don't accept anything because you haven't said anything.
Well, well, here's my, my opinion, if I, if I make. The reviews are all completely inaccurate. They're looking at an entire approved site plan. They didn't look at this with the eyes of just the trailers. Everything else is certainly reviewed.
This would be... This is more of an amendment to the original site plan.
I get it, it's just like, there's only...
Because Bruce Peters said rather than a totally new site plan.
I understand.
So, that would, that would be...
I understand.
That would be the correct determination there.
That's fine, you, you guys have broke me, though.
This would be...
This is it, you guys have potentially broke me, so this is my last shot. If it doesn't, if it's not approved, I move on.
No, I'm tired of driving down that road there, there's too many holes in it.
Yeah, well, well, that's because, that's because the land that belongs here, I had to spend fifty thousand dollars to prove that I had an easement to get on. If it belongs to the state of New Jersey, I'm not allowed to repair it.
Right.
I can use it, but I can't repair it.
No, no, it's, yeah, it's running up to it. No, no, what I'm saying is that, eh, it should be an amendment, if everybody agrees, it should be an amendment to the site plan. Number one, number two is, you should, a, a, a more detailed narrative, just drop it off as a condition, so that when it's sent up to Rockland County Planning, everything is on there.
I'm, I'm, I'm here to tell you, it's not going back. If, if, if there's a continuation or something tonight that requires us to go further, I have to just pull the plug. No, 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 I'm not, I'm very, I'm very trying to help you. I'm, I'm trying to help you.
No, no. Listen to, you're, yeah. You have your attorney here, you're paying Mr. Brenner, which I wouldn't do, but you're paying Mr. Brenner, let him, let him, you know, discuss it for you, please.
I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be unrealistic, I'm really appreciate what you guys do.
Okay, just relax, relax, let him do the talking. That's what you're paying him for, let him do the talking.
Well, then, then done, would you tell them that after tonight, I'm not actually trying to do it?
Relax, yeah.
Right, would you? Thank you, because I think that the nar...
A change in narrative, that's all.
The narrative explains all the questions we've been asking.
But Leo, my client is really upset, he's getting a heart attack.
No, no heart attacks, no.
No, no, no heart attacks, it's just, it's just a... I literally, I, I really thought I was trying to do the right thing, and I think I didn't.
No, you are doing the right thing.
I mean, there's so many commercial buildings, these trailers everywhere they want.
Now, the other, that explains temporary and everything else. Now, one of the places they talk about, one of the, uh, the comments talks about, are these containers visible from the residences over there?
The residents in Oak Pen?
Yeah.
I personally, and this is what kills me, I saw that as one of the comments, they, the only resident that can see it is Camper Gash. The residents on the other side, I, I've done everything for those people, I put up massive berms and trees to give them nice protection, they can't see anything.
So, there's...
They have no comparison.
Yeah, so there is, there is, uh, for any residents with people living there are...
It's protected.
It's protected already, there's no need for a landscape plan because we're not doing any additional, uh, work there, okay? There's no drainage approval.
No, I don't think so.
Oh, no, that came in later, okay. It says here, after reviewing documents provided, more explanations needed before a recommendation can be made. That's from Collier, so...
Well, we're not doing it.
I know, I know.
You just got to show me that's under, what square footage? I mean, I can't, I've been through so much stuff, let, let my friend...
No, I think, I think that the, that the description of what's being done here negates, if this is an amendment to sort of, to a, to a, uh, a plan that's already been approved, number one, that it, uh, there is nothing that's going to be ripped up, it's things being pulled in, parked, drained out.
Temporarily.
Doesn't, temporarily, and it's used as storage, that there is nothing, there's no area disturbance that we're talking about, as far as I can see, we're not ripping up anything, repaving anything, changing any of the ground there. Am I correct on that, Mr. Brenner?
As far as I know, but I couldn't...
Okay, that's good. So, put that in the, in the narrative too, please, and let's, just send that to, uh, to Brooker, not Brooker, who's footage is, Collier's, which should negate the need for even having a, uh, drainage report.
Does that change anything?
Right. I have, uh, no additional comments at this time, thank you.
The one question you asked him, can I ask, I thought the question they were asking about the, the protection was, they wanted me to put a screen on the fence going along here to protect the camp, is that not, did I read that wrong?
So, camp is closed, isn't it? It's still in operation.
It's in operation.
Is there anyone who's questioned that?
Nobody's questioned it.
One of your...
No, it's Rockland County Planning, I think.
Don't worry about it.
We can override the cap.
Okay.
Right, we're not, we're not looking for it there.
No, I, I don't have any issues with it, I mean, you know, in the county, you know, they, they made a lot of off-the-wall, uh, recommendations that...
Open up the, uh, motion open to the public?
Motion open, public portion.
Do you have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this project? One more time, anybody from the public wish to speak on this project? Hearing done, a motion closed.
Motion closed, public portion.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
All favor.
Aye, any opposed? None. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion for final with conditions.
Do we have a lead agency yet? No, no, we need a motion for lead agency.
Okay, motion for lead agent?
Motion for lead agent.
Okay, second, all favor?
Aye.
Motion for neg deck?
Motion for neg deck.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion for...
Final with conditions.
Final with conditions. Okay, Mr. Brenner has a few of them already. Okay, Office of Buildings Zoning and Planning, Rick Oliver, June seventh, has seven. Bureau of Fire Prevention, August fifth, has one. Uh, Fire Engineering has six. Yeah, I have that. Um, Roma Professional, August one, has none. Uh, Rockland County Planning, August seventh, has eleven. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, August eighteenth, has five. And that's it, do you have anything else?
Yeah, just the, um, that they revised narrative describing the project will be submitted.
Well, revise the plan to say this is an, an amendment to an existing plan?
Right, that, that'd be condition of the, uh, if this is an amendment to the, uh, the current plan that was approved prior, prior approval, this is an amendment to it.
Letter from the county? Was there a letter from the county?
Yeah.
Do we have to override anything on it?
I don't think so, they just suggest screening, they don't...
And also to state that the, um, storage containers were, are temporarily...
That would all be in the revised narrative explaining each and each item that covers it all. And the narrative would also be forwarded through Buildings Department to, uh, Collier. The revision of the, uh, and put in there that there's no land disturbance or anything to that effect. Okay?
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
I made the motion.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Good luck, sir.
You don't have to come back.
Thank you, and, and, no, I apologize if you took me on that, just... Usually guy asks to be doctor, something, please. I had a reason. All right. Thank you, guys.
All right.
This guy's yours?
Yeah.
Not mine. Project Sycamore, phase three, temporary trailer, if it's permitted, view. Have any on this? What do you pay for?
You want us to bring up, you going for it today, or you want us to hang up first?
I don't, I never receive plans, I just...
The plan? Um, Ronald... Rick Allo? July sixteen? Recommended by Rick Oliver to finalize the release of the plan. Back in January twenty-second?
Question with Rick Oliver, structural tone? Have to get on the next one. So, this is, uh, the manager of all deal, and the PM for the project, and this ain't invented by sites superintendent. Done a couple phases, we, we did the original project for, uh, the data center, it's up there. We also did phase two, which was adding a blade room here. Phase three, now is adding a couple blade room. Uh, we have the permit for that. Originally... We have the trailers. So, this is the site plan. Actual... There you are, I think. After we're using that, the, the old data comment. And we did it for the last two phases, that's where our trailers were, but just to repeat. Usually with the application, you send this same paperwork. Find it, I mean, I can read the mail to you. Actually, we have, we have paper copies, the blade rooms, paper copies.
What do you say, you want to put the trailers here?
No, uh, up here.
Oh, okay.
And if you look at, if you look at this, here's common roads.
Okay, just line here, up there.
Here's... Correct.
Okay.
And if you look, that's where the trailers were, you see how it's spread out from last time? We take out the gravel, we put grass down, now next phase, you just do it again. Actually, we've done twice, right? We really have the building.
I'm with it? Please say, I'm with it?
No.
We're going to break down on the project. So, the motion, so... Sycamore, phase three. Three trailers.
Temporary, yeah.
Temporary trailers. Motion. Second?
Second.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
He's quick on that, I can get out of here.
I wish I was that quick, we would have done that earlier. Yeah, I'm sorry, you have to sit around.
I'm actually a solid point line board.
Okay, we should have it, there's all of us, okay, this is...
Thank you, thank you.
That's the height. Oversight, we never, because it is... Also approved, we plan, so that we did approve the power. The only thing we didn't do was the height.
Well, we didn't discuss it, we discussed it.
Yeah, we, we never made a, a, a decision. Al is, is saying that... I, that they were asking for one twenty-five, one twenty. What?
Seventy-five, one twenty.
Yeah. Uh, we do, uh... Height at a hundred and twenty feet. And there's no necessity. Right, but we have discussed the height.
That was part of the plan.
We discussed it, but we never said specifically. And that you do not have to go to the Z B A.
I'm just wondering why we'd have to say that if we approved the plan.
But it was approved, it was, it was... All of his comments.
Because otherwise, it has to be the Z B A. All that discussion was had.
Yeah, you know, all...
Because it was never supposed to be an oversight.
It was assumed they didn't have it, but it was an oversight.
Yeah, it was an oversight.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with this.
Yeah. Any on the board, do you have any more property?
No.
I see.
So, approved height seventy-five to one twenty with no necessity.
Proceed, yeah, that?
Shall be the motion for this?
Bruce makes a second? All favor, aye. No hope?
The height is already...
Right.
I'll, I'll send you my language.
Motion to approve minutes, um...
July night.
Motion to approve minutes, July night, as of then. Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Motion. Motion for adjournment? Second?
I'll say.
All favor, aye. Any opposed? Shame on you. We're done, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.